What's up everybody, today we're gonna be doing a database review from Dooley, a community member. Let's have a look at their stats. Click on position. You wanna do last month? These seventy-five thousand hands, or you wanna do all of them?
Ah, last month is probably a better sample.
Okay, good.
Just because it represents my play a lot more accurately and how I usually play, you know, like, and how many tables, etc.
Alright, so first off, you're gonna give me a quick filter. Okay, we're gonna look at your game under twenty big line, so top left, click quick filter, yeah.
You wanna, you wanna just control my screen instead?
Uh, yeah, if you want.
So we're doing a database review?
Yeah. I cannot click.
Weird.
Do you see the mouse moving?
Yep.
This is last month already.
Yeah, I cannot click.
Okay, let me, let me, let me try doing something, oh.
Yeah, I can, like, I can click on windows, but I can't click on the back. So, quick filter, yeah. Hang on, this is gonna be, yeah, can you move now? Should have control of the screen, the mouse. Okay, there you go. Uh, filter editor. Okay, effective stack, area of stack, instead of any, uh, less than, than twenty big ones.
Wouldn't it be less than twenty-one?
But it could be less than twenty-one as well. Okay. Alright.
You're, you're losing, Dooley.
Alright, so...
Well, I mean, it's only twenty thousand hands, there's a lot of variance at twenty, because you're doing a lot of jamming.
Now, if we looked at this last month, uh, with all the stacked up, he had really, really clean stacks. But when we got to shorter stack, now, uh, we are a little bit, uh, so the first thing you want to improve is your big blind defense. For twenty big blind and less, pull up the notepad. So, start a new page, database. So, write down, big blind defense, for under, short stack. Sub-twenty big blind. You are at minus forty.
Minus forty?
Yeah, you're all in adjusted big blind for a hundred, for the big blind, at this side.
Oh, that, that.
Thirty-nine, okay? So, you could make it minus thirty.
Oh, you're clearly not VPip enough. From the big blinds, only it's less than thirty, that doesn't seem like it can be right. It might be too many.
So your all-in is minus forty right now, and we, this is the number one spot we wanna improve. Because of your short stack, and then, you know, the shorter you get, your chips matters a little bit more. So, and, the number one thing I would wanna, want you to work on is like, a big blind defense, uh, for twenty big lines, so the way you do that is like, you set up GTA Wizard for twenty big blind stack, and then you just train the big blind against all the table. A lot of, against the button, probably, but also all the table.
Louis, what's wrong with his big blind defense? How did you determine that there was something wrong with his big blind defense?
The minus forty EV big blind per hundred. Uh, it is a little bit low. It could be better.
What, what numbers are you using as a benchmark?
Uh, I'm using, uh, the book from Michael Acevedo, which is Modern Poker Theory, in which he provides like a chart. Uh, and that chart gives us guidelines for like, uh, um, players that are breaking even, player that are losing, and players that are winning. Players that are very big winner and the, the super crusher. And then you can, you can compare your numbers with, uh, the, the ones from the best players in the world, and you see where differences are. And then you can train, uh, this portion of your play to be a little bit closer to, uh, what the super crushers are doing.
Perfect, thank you.
This is on the, on his book?
Yeah.
Okay, I have the book, but I haven't read it yet.
Uh, you, there's a lot of gold in that book.
So, for my EV at, zero to twenty-one big lines, for the big blind is minus five point six two. So you could definitely improve on that.
Yeah. Uh, if you check out the latest article, uh, that I published for poker coaching. The sub-chart is in there, if you wanna look at the, at the lobby, uh, look at the, the study session, on, on poker coaching. Poker coaching, study group, scroll up a little bit. Scroll up, scroll up, scroll up, scroll up. Uh, dealing with a downswing, exactly, click on that. And then, exactly, bingo. So, this is from Michael Acevedo's book. Uh, I highly suggest that everyone grabs a copy, so as we quickly saw, um, oops, there you go, like, the large winners, uh, they get their big blind win rate down to minus thirty. Okay? So, look at the first, the first box, the very first one, the large winners, their big blind is minus thirty. Yours is minus forty. It, it's closer to a break-even player, right? So, if you get, if you improve your big blind win rate, here, uh, it's, it's gonna take you closer to, to like, where you should be, basically.
Okay. This is like a reference for six-mast table, is it okay also for nine-mast table, more or less?
Yeah, it's just a guideline for win rates based on position, but if you look at, on your older manager tree, like, the positional report is, is six max as well.
Ah, yeah, right.
So, okay, uh, then, the number one, the number two thing that I see, if you look at the button, look at the button, look at the win rate from like, a break-even player. From the button, so twenty-eight, okay, and you're at twenty here. Okay, so the button is the number two area I would try to improve on. Okay, so button, under twenty, twenty-one big line. Your EV is twenty, it should be thirty.
And thirty-seven. Sorry, I'm just moving rooms.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
Uh, what I see from his stat is very static, he's, uh, pretty much opening the same from, uh, EP than, uh, B, from a button. It's twenty from the EP early position, and twenty-two from button.
Yeah, you're right, that's something as well.
It's a very static range.
Yeah. You wanna be like, closer to thirty, or even thirty-five, like, the best players in the world, they get thirty or thirty-five from it. Okay? And then, like Eric mentioned, if we look at your pre-flop raising from the button, it's only nineteen. So there's probably not many kings seven off in there, right?
Right.
Like, do you raise?
I do, I do fold that hand, actually, what?
And I'm, that, that, yeah, so, uh, you wanna probably like, work on your pre-flop gain for the button, for the stack depth as well.
So an interesting thing you could do, Dooley, that I've done in the past, um, for myself and with people I've helped with these database analysis is, when you're missing a, like, a large slot of your RFI, you can isolate portions with a range explorer, um, of the opening range, like, I don't know, the floor of the offsuit or the floor of the suited. And you can see which portions of these, which portions of the range you're actually missing a lot of.
It's interesting, I actually looked at this spot in HRC yesterday, because I, I thought I wasn't opening enough from the button. And it's be, it's when like, uh, button is say, button in big blind, say, around equal stacks, forty, fifty big blind area, whatever, and the small blind, say like, ten or less. What I saw is that the button range doesn't, like, at chip EV, the button open range doesn't really change that much. And what was wild is, you don't fold like anything when they jam either. Like, it was a very small percentage of small folds, very, very small.
Right, uh, one thing I am noticing right away, Dooley, is that you're folding to three bet around thirty-five percent of the time? Uh, I think that's a little bit sticky.
It should be forty, yeah.
Yeah, I think you're calling, uh, three bets way too much.
Especially against, you know, like, in, in theory, that's closer to okay, but, uh, against our opponents, like, if anything, you should find a couple extra folds, right?
Yeah. Uh, like, in general, people don't, don't really bluff that often when they three bet, so if you defend at GTO, it's already like, not so good. But if you over-defend, it's definitely a leak.
But if he played this range, it's pretty normal, that is not, uh, folding, uh, he should not fold as much as, as we should. You know what I mean?
Well, more and less, because we're gonna like, we're not, not gonna compound on mistakes, we're just gonna fix his pre-flop range instead. And then fix like, what goes along, which is like, folding to three bets in general. But sure, if you got a good hand, I mean, you're not gonna fold, right? Okay. Now, 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 what is this stat called? Okay, so Dooley, I close your notes, click on the tracker. On the right side, there's a book. Click on the book. Um, trying to write down OOP.
I mean, that was a good point Eric made, if he's opening tighter ranges, he's not gonna have as many folds.
Yeah, uh, scroll down.
And I think the twenty big fine effective, uh, changes that frequency too.
So what I'm looking for here is bet out of position heads up. So scroll down a little bit.
Like on the flop?
No, no, no. Uh, yeah, no, no, yeah, well, on most treats, but, uh, ah, okay, flop C bet, so you have it, so scroll to the right then. So close this. And then scroll to the right. Okay, flop C bet out of position. Okay. So, twenty, 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 and then sixty, okay? So already, okay, from, from this stack depth, from the cutoff, uh, you, you, like, the cutoff is not betting sixty-five percent of the time. Okay, when, when you're like, raising from the cutoff, and then the button calls, and then you're out of position, uh, you're, you're never betting as often here, so you, like, you're betting too much out of position heads up.
Way too much.
From the cutoff. From this stack. Now, 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 now.
What is a good number for this, because I think is my, one of my league too?
It's around the forty percent max.
Thirty-five, forty, yeah.
Yeah, so the tracker. Dooley, I wanna see the tracker, not ape stars cheat cheat. Uh, scroll to the right. So your button RFI, like, clearly that's not good, but we already have it. Uh, cutoff, probably not good either, because twenty-four is too, too short.
Yeah, I checked, it's like, over forty somewhere.
Yeah. And then, uh, okay, why do you only, uh, like, from the button here, it seems like you're only C betting forty-seven percent of the time on the flop? Like, you're C betting only forty-seven percent of the time. You wanna know what my number is here?
Closer to like seventy, probably.
Um, I never think, I think it's around eighty percent. Okay, because, uh, like, in positions, there's many, many spots where the button is just gonna range that, right? So you need to find more range betting from the button. So, yeah. Like, overall, you're betting the flop only twenty-three percent of the time. Do you see your bet flop percentage? And then when you're in position, it's only fifty percent, so if somebody has a HUD or is paying attention, so you're, you're only betting the flop when you, like, it's kind of simple, right, because you're, the portion, the equity portion of your range is always gonna be around thirty percent. Uh, then thirty percent of bluffs, and then thirty percent nothing. So when you see somebody who's betting flop thirty, thirty-five, forty percent, or close to these numbers, like, the flop best, flop bet is too honest there.
I could try and make it with an example, with this exact setup, I have, I see bet ninety-one percent from the button heads up.
Yeah.
And hold on, it works, they fold sixty-four percent of the time, which is a drastic mistake on their part.
Yeah.
It just prints fucking EV.
So like, if you see bet more, you're gonna win more chips, so that's gonna bring up your, your overall EV already from the button.
Is, is he better on the turn?
Uh, on the turn, see, on the turn, it's, it's better, right? Because, um, on the turn, like, you're more around sixty percent, that, that's kind of closer to what it should be. But then again, uh, you don't double barrel often enough from the button.
Yeah, that's, that's sixty percent C bet is easy because the, the flop C bet is so low.
Yeah.
You, you, you're not putting yourself in enough hard positions.
Yeah, 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 you don't, you don't barrel enough. You don't see bet enough, you don't double barrel enough when a good card comes.
You're too comfortable.
You're not stealing enough, basically. So steel, steel is a big weakness, uh, from, from this stack depth.
I mean, honestly, looking at my HUD, I don't see any reason to ever check, that as much as they fold, as much as they overfold, I don't really see a reason to even check.
Yeah.
In my games.
What are you getting for folds, Ken?
It's steel on both directions, by the way, Dooley, on both directions, because you don't steal enough, and the thing that happens the most when you're defending your big blind is you're facing a steel, and your big blind win rate is not high enough, so it's still for both directions. You wanna play against steel from the big blind, and you wanna be the stealer from the button.
And population doesn't check raise enough either, so they're so face up when they check raise. Till you get in the, you know, tougher tables.
Um, okay, so, so, show us the, the tracker here. Scroll to the right. Okay, very nice, very nice. So, Dooley, I want you to write this down. Okay, in your note. You do, you should, whenever you face a river bet, okay, and you're out of position, like, either from early position, or from the small blind or the big blind, you should close your eyes and fold. Do you see your river call efficiency, Dooley?
Yeah, I don't know what these numbers mean, I kinda just added them, cuz, uh,
Yeah, okay, well, overall, you're, okay, so it's very clear.
Better than mine.
Like, you, from the button, you're slow-playing too much, okay? That leads you to have a, a river call efficiency of like, almost four, which is really bad. That means you're not betting for value, you're slow-playing too much, and then you get to the river with a super-strong range, and then it's easy to call, and when you make that call, you make a lot of chips. That's, that's not good. And then, if you look at your river call efficiency, from, for example, the small blind, look at the first one. So what that means is zero point turn twenty-five, is that whenever you put one chip calling on the river, you get zero point twenty-five back in average. What that means is, whenever you, you call one chip, you win point twenty-five back. Okay, so if you didn't make the call, i- it would be one. Right? But now, since you're making the call, your, your call is so bad, that your chip is divided in three, and four, and you only get a quarter back. Okay, so you're, whenever like, you're out of position, somebody bets into you, you should just close your eyes and fold on the river. Because, uh, your, your, your river call efficiency is very, very bad. The minimum you should be at, when it comes to river calling, is like, one, at one, you're breaking even. You pay, you call one chip, you get one chip back.
I think it's like, a problem with some small sample sizes, cuz, uh, overall, is one point six five.
Yeah, but it's just because you're slow-playing too much from late position.
I mean, fair.
Yeah, he's talking about a small blind, it's pretty bad, actually, mine is one point eight at twenty, effective, so it's not too bad, but yeah, small blind's bad.
Louie, would you?
Yeah, I haven't really, I haven't really done my river call from different positions, that's a, that's a good thing to look at.
Now, would you talk more about, um, what hap, about how high your river call efficiency shouldn't be, what, what number is too big, and why?
Uh, around two, uh, it's roughly the guideline from what I know, okay, so like, you call one chip, you get two in return, even two is a little bit high, okay? At two, you're starting to slow-play a little bit. So guideline is above two, you're slow-playing way too much. And under two, like, you could do a little bit better.
And that's both in position and out of position?
Yeah.
Okay.
And like, one is break-even. So like, uh, if you, if you're at one, that means you're fifty percent of the time right, fifty percent of the time wrong, so you're like, uh, it's not your best place already.
You're a solver.
But, yeah, exactly, but if you're under one, you have a big leak, you should just close your eyes and fold. And, and it's tough, right, but at the same time, population doesn't bet for ten value often enough on the river, they love to trap and they love to slow-play. They love to trap, so when they trap you, they're not betting for ten value, you know? So if you're out there making these calls, why, while like, people don't bluff this spot, well, it takes a really, really good player to bet like, for ten value on almost every spot on scary boards and everything. And, like, unless you're against a big, a very good player, I mean, you shouldn't call too much. So that's nice, that was for, uh, sub-twenty big blind, now show us between twenty and forty. Make it the twenty-one, forty-two.
Shouldn't it be nineteen and forty-two?
Nah, it doesn't really matter. It's just to see how, how you play a different stack depth. Okay, so, already, we can spot pretty much the same leaks, okay, if you look at your all-in adjusted big blind per hundred from the big blind, I have minus fifty. Okay? So like, big blind defense right now, I think should be your priority.
Yeah.
That's all you should do. So like, forty big blinds?
How often do you check raise from the big line? I bet it's super low.
Oh, it's probably non-existent.
That's not good, it prints. When you learn the right, the, uh, combinations on certain textures, versus certain opponents, it's, it's, or positions, it's pretty good. I mean, mine's still low, and I do quite a bit, but I'm still too low, but it, it's good.
Alright, so for this stack depth, your overall VPip is pretty low, like, twenty-three fifteen, twenty-four fifteen, that's a little bit low. Um, you're not raising enough from the button or the cutoff, that's for sure. You need to work on your steel, on your steel from, from that stack depth, for sure. Uh, scroll to the right. Hang on. Okay, that's, that's a lot better, so see your flop C bet out of position here, on the left. So like, uh, the first three. Flop C bet out of position percentage, on the, right on the left, Dooley. Move it to the left, 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 left. I know, don't scroll. The, the, the column is on the left. The fourth one.
Oh, it's on the left.
Yeah, the fourth column.
Fourth from the left, fourth of the left.
That's fourth from the right, Dooley.
Huh?
Did you see?
Oh, there you are.
There you go, welcome back. Uh, so see here, it's around forty percent, so that's already a lot better. Okay? Um, your button raise first in is not good, thirty-one percent here. And cutoff RFI not good at all. Scroll down, we're at forty big blind, so button and cutoff RFI not good. Last line, yeah? Okay, you got it. Never mind. Uh, show me the database again. Okay, scroll to the right. To the right again. See, do you see your river call efficiency here? Like, even in position, now you're struggling, like, when you're deep stack, whenever you make a call from the button, uh, you're losing money. Okay? So, whenever you're not slow-playing somebody, basically, and you make a river call, uh, you're losing chips. Like, here, your river call efficiency is better, right, but it's still not good enough. Especially from the big one.
Say another leak here, his re-steal from the small blinds about half what it should be. He's only three betting uh, versus late position steals like ten percent, should be like, I don't know, eighteen, twenty?
Uh, the big blind as well, you calling from the bottom, but also from the big blind. So, yeah, and also from the ball, from the big one. Yeah, that's good. Um, what else? So. From what we see here, like Ken said earlier, uh, like you're. You're, if you look at your flop uh, check raise, it's around nine percent, could easily be doubled that.
This one, right?
Yeah, it's at nine percent, uh, GTOs around twenty percent on some textures. It could be a lot more, like you need more check raise.
Some textures, it's fucking really high, but overall, yeah, like twenty.
Not, not only from the big blind.
True.
In, like, first off, you bet too much from out of position and then you don't check raise enough.
Yeah, you can't, you can't check raise cuz you bet everything.
Yeah, exactly. So it says, very often, like, two leaks are, are gonna be linked like this. Now duly show us above forty big ones. Like forty big ones plus. Actually, show us from forty, forty-one to sixty. Sixty-two, make it sixty-two, yeah, something like that, that's good enough. Yeah? Now scroll to the left. See, do you see your button win rate now, it's getting closer? Look at your average EV here, when you're deep stacked, you play a lot better. Now you're a winning player, now it's a lot closer to like a. So with base, you, you probably do well early on in the tournament, but when it gets deeper and deeper and your stack gets shorter. Uh, you don't do well as much anymore, so you need to train your short stack because your deep stack game is a lot better than your short stack game.
Okay.
Your button, you raise more, you raise more from the button, your RFI is higher. You're, look at your big blind win rate, your EV minus twenty, that's some sexy numbers. That's some very nice numbers, the small blind win rate minus nine, that's some very nice numbers. Okay, probably because you've been training that big blind with us, like, because this is what we do a lot, right?
Yeah.
So, but here, your button win rate's not high enough, you wanna make it more like thirty here.
I, I think when uh, the, I think when the, you, you, you get shorter. You want to preserve your stack when you are twenty, you don't want to, to, to C bet. When you have nothing because you want to preserve your stack, that's right?
Yeah, I think, I think I'm uh, I'm just playing a little bit more scared when I'm lower, uh, when I have less chips. Taking less.
Button. You, you need, you need a better win rate from the button and then show us your river call efficiency.
Oh, God.
Oh. So zero, so especially from out of position, so from the stack depth. You should bring up the notes. So from this stack depth. From every position, you should just close, uh, no, from out of position mostly. Uh, you should close your eyes and fold to every single river bet you face. No, 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 not every raise you face, every single river bet.
Jesus.
That means like you have like, it's kind of a strong hand, right? You have like two pair, but the flush completed, or like, you shouldn't trust yourself here.
Oh, trust yourself, this seems like this, this seems like you have, you have sixty bays and you're like, you ain't bluffing me.
Yeah, exactly, don't trust yourself here. Okay, you should just fold. People don't bet for ten value often enough.
Yeah, you know, one, one thing you can think of is.
Even if you perceive your hand to be very strong, you should don't, not listen to yourself and always fold.
You should filter for these spots and uh, see what you're calling with.
Yeah, we can, but it's, it's, yeah.
Yeah, the idea is just find these spots where you get here with a marginal made hand and fold all of those first.
Yeah.
Then find your ones with your weakest top pair and consider folding those more.
Yeah.
And, you know, just kind of build the structure of your uh, river value based on your hand strength. And when you realize you're at the top of your range, consider calling and when you realize you're at the bottom, a hundred percent fold. And when you're in the middle, strongly consider folding.
I always like to think about if I'm blocking bluffs or unblocking, I'm, that's a little bit more down the road, but if you're blocking bluffs and you have like a marginal pair and you're blocking bluffs, it's really bad.
Also, the, the way I think you should play it is unless you have a mark on the guy that says this guy's plays bunker poker and is absolutely out of line all the time, you can't call, simply automatically fold unless you have a note.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with that, I feel like the results, just assuming that they're all like. Every third pot C bot, C bet is weak and gonna fold, you know, to aggression, every two-thirds pot C bet is super strong. Like every three bet is, has half as many bluffs as it should have.
Yeah, like even people that try to play that are studying somewhat and try to play well are still gonna struggle to find enough bluffs.
Yeah, exactly. Uh. Now show us above sixty big ones, anything above sixty big ones.
Sixty-two to two hundred.
Now scroll to the left. Now look at your win rate here, like very good numbers, you're, you're playing really good, you're running good. So the beginning of the tournament, you're doing well, yeah, your win rate is not good from the, the, the later, later positions. Still the same story, like look at your PFR here, like your button PFR is just ridiculous, sixteen.
Yeah, you gotta make your EV, you wanna make your money in the, the cutoff and but, that's the two positions where you need to be printing money.
Yeah.
EV. You can't do it if you're not opening the hands.
Yeah.
Like I don't know about HF3, but P24, you can actually filter and bring up your Vtip range from positions to see. What your hands are, what combos you're actually opening. And, and a range, like it's the, it has the range visual, visually.
Check, check your river call efficiency, Duly. See, still, still very close to zero, like from the big blind, you should completely avoid calling rivers. From the button and the cutoff as well. Cut off our button.
Yeah, believe a guy once in a while.
Yeah, oh, I believe them every time.
Especially when they triple, no, a lot of people don't triple barrel bluff, honestly.
Yeah.
They can find.
Unless you're up against Louis, then never believe.
Exactly.
Most.
It's really a.
Most decent players can find two barrels, they struggle with that third barrel and they're getting called and they don't have shit.
Yeah. Alright.
Is deep, is deep stack play is really good, is better than mine?
Yeah, like early in the tournament, he does better than, than the later stage.
I always end up punting off my stack.
Well, duly, you got a lot to work on now, so pretty nice. I'm gonna invite you to move to our Discord uh, and train for what we just learned.
Awesome.
Thanks a lot for watching.